2025 meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. Gene, could you take your role, please?
Kate Kelly.
President.
Sean Kevlin.
Here.
John Simons.
Here.
Aetan Goldberg.
I'm here.
Peter Boynton.
Hi.
Okay, so I do see a bunch of people here, which is not our norm. So I'm just gonna kind of go over how things are going to work tonight. We're gonna go in order of the agenda. The first thing is an A and R plan. Really, that's just the applicant and talking to the board. Then we're gonna have two public hearings. So, public hearings, there's gonna be a public hearing as to 11 Marble Ridge Road, and a public hearing as to Stone Cleave Road, map 104, a bunch of lots. The way the public hearings work is that Gene will kind of introduce us to the topic, give us some information about it. We will then have the applicant come up, who will give a presentation, whatever they want to tell us about the project. The planning board will then ask questions and make comments. We will also read into the record or note any comments that have come in through email. We will then open it up to public comments and questions. In the public comment and question, if you want to make a public comment, I will ask that you come to the podium. I'll ask you, introduce yourself and tell us where you live. You can then make any comments or questions to the board, okay? We don't have back and forth between the commentators and the applicant. You can make any comments or questions to us. If it's questions that we can answer, if it's comments that we can address, we will do so. If we feel it's appropriate for the applicant to address those, then we'll have that. As many people can come and say what they want, though I'd encourage not to be necessarily repetitive, and then we will go from there. I don't think either of these public hearings is likely to close tonight. They will likely be continued for another date, but we'll determine that as we go. But that's my expectation. Okay, A and R plan, 169 Chestnut Street, RCE Realty Trust, Jack Cahill, trustee.
So you may recall, previously, the owner who owns 169 Chestnut Street, it's a house located essentially right on Chestnut with a large oversized barn on the property. He owns this entire front parcel here. It was contemplated during the approval of Queer Run to be four lots. However, he did not divide them into four, so he did an A and R to combine all these at one point in time. He came to you not long ago and divided it into four lots, which was originally intended. However, he never recorded that plan, and you only have six months to record an A and R plan, and so now he's resubmitted it, but is only dividing one house lot at this time. I anticipate in the future, he's gonna come back, one at a time lately, to further subdivide, but for now, he's proposing a house on the corner of Quail and Chestnut Street, and it complies with frontage, access, CBA, and setbacks for the proposed building.
What's the size of this new lot?
Twenty-five thousand oh forty-nine. Minimum required is twenty-five thousand.
Is it the same footprint as last time, or is it a little bit different?
I think it's the same.
I think it's the same.
Yeah, okay.
If there's any change in a dimension, John, it's not material.
Okay, so for an A and R, our criteria, does it have a frontage? So let's see, we have total frontage of 182 feet, so that meets the requirements of the law. It has access on Quail Run Lane, and it meets zoning, and it's a buildable lot, correct?
Yes.
Okay, does it have any buildings on it currently?
It does not.
Okay, all right. Can I get a motion to approve the A-
I'm sorry, there's a swimming pool on this lot, right?
Okay.
No, the swimming pool's been taken out.
It's already been taken out.
It's gone.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the A and R plan for 169 Chestnut Street, and to instruct the planner to sign the necessary forms?
So, both seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. All right, that's approved. You're welcome. All right, everybody see that? Five minutes. All right, 11 Marble Ridge Road.
All right, just ask you to bear with me, my staff report is a little lengthier than normal. So as you know, this application's before you for limited site plan review. It was filed on August 27th. There is a shot clock related to this type of permit. It's 90 days post the application, so that shot clock brings you to November 25th. I will say, I know that the applicant is optimistic that this will be wrapped up well ahead of that 90-day timeline, but that is, in fact, the shot clock on the permit. There's eight reasonable regulations under the Dover Amendment that the board can weigh in on, and those are listed in the staff report. In early June 2025, it was learned that the select board agenda included an application for an on-premise pours license. Although that license was granted by the select board and subsequently by the state, it has not been issued due to lack of a certificate of occupancy permit for the existing operations and zoning non-compliance, thus the application for this limited site plan review. Operations began with growing of grapes approximately four years ago, and has been expanded to include wine tastings, celebratory events, and short-term rentals of three guest houses. In an effort to allow some of the operations to continue while the required permitting takes place, the town has granted, as of today, I hope it was issued, but three temporary certificate of occupancy. Those have been restricted, certificate of occupancies, the second of which was included in your meeting packet as part of the application. The application includes a letter from the building commissioner, which includes a determination that the primary and dominant use of the property is growing grapes, harvesting grapes, and the production of wine. Accordingly, such use is consistent with the goals of Mass General Law 40A, Section 3. However, a determination as to the applicability of Dover Amendment for the proposed accessory uses to the winery, so those are things like bridal showers, weddings, wedding showers, rehearsal dinners, and overnight guesthouse rentals, was not made. Rather, the letter suggests, in regards to the proposed accessory uses, that an argument be made by the applicant to the planning board. The farm winery is comprised of two passes of land totaling 5.01 acres. The lots were created as part of a 1995 conservation easement plan that was recorded at the registry. As far as I can see, it's not an A and R plan, it wasn't endorsed by the planning board, but it was recorded as a conservation easement. That plan succeeded the definitive subdivision plan that was approved in 1994. So, one year prior, definitive subdivision created a six-lot subdivision. Five new homes were proposed, and the one existing home, which was on the corner of, it's 11 Marble Ridge Road, on the corner of Great Pond and Marble Ridge. So the conservation easement plan divided that 1, 5.01 acre into approximately two-and-a-half acres each. The existing home shown on this plan was located on the whole 5.01 acres. Included in the application is the applicant's depiction of a 1,250-square-foot tasting room, which has seating capacity of 83 people and standing room of 250 people. This does not include outdoor seating and staff areas. The applicant is requesting guest occupancy with up to 83 people seated or 99 standing within the tasting room. In addition, he requests additional occupancy for outdoor seating. The parking plan indicates 35 total spaces. Primary parking is 12 park spaces, I'm sorry, 12 paved spaces. Secondary parking is seven on gravel, and overflow parking is 15 spaces on grass. Personal vehicles are garaged, and a parking attendant is proposed to be provided when using the grass spaces. The building commissioner has determined the use to be cultural, recreational, and entertainment, and that the maximum occupancy is 99 people standing and 83 seated. He has also determined that the minimum parking spaces required are 25, and as I said, they're proposing 35. Amy Maxner, the conservation administrator, has requested a wetlands delineation in order to determine if a conservation commission filing is required. The applicant has indicated that the parking areas shown on the parking plan are located outside both the 100-foot buffer zone from wetlands and the 200 riverfront area associated with the stream on the property. The wetlands proximate to the parking areas are scheduled to be delineated, well, they were scheduled on Friday, the 12th, and the applicant proposes a rope barrier to make sure that that area is not encroached upon during events.
Gene, what is the underlying zoning on the parcel?
Residential one.
R1, okay.
And, Gene, it's coming under the umbrella of Dover because it's an agricultural use?
Again, the building commissioner determined the primary use of the winery, the grape grow-in and harvesting and selling of wine falls under Dover, but he's left it open for deliberation here as to the accessory units. Accessory uses like renting the guesthouses on a short-term basis, holding weddings, bridal showers, you know, event, celebratory event-type uses.
Right, but the premise of the application is that it fits under Dover as part of the agricultural use, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Would it, which of those would be allowed under R1, if any?
So we have an agriculture bylaw in, I think, all residential districts, but it's not in sync with Dover because it requires a minimum of 10 acres of land, and this is 5.01 acres.
So, agriculture is pretty clear under Dover, but of the things that the building commissioner or inspector talks about is accessory uses, the guesthouses, parties, events, we can also maybe throw tasting sales and stuff like that, are those allowed under R1?
No.
Okay, so- I'm sorry, Gene?
No.
Okay, so, as I see it, there's a, we have a couple of different questions before us in this application. One, what fits under Dover? What doesn't fit under Dover? If it does fit under Dover, then we can go through the kind of criteria and review the setbacks and the, and the size and the scope and the parking and all of that, and we should go through all of that. If it doesn't, if something doesn't fit under Dover, in our opinion, I think we need to say that, and then there needs to be further discussions about what happens from there. So it's kind of a dichotomy of things. So those are the things that we all need to discuss tonight and going forward. So with that, why don't we turn it over to you folks and tell us what you're doing, and how you, and please feel free to address kind of the topics that we just raised.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, members of the planning board. My name is Brig Leland, and I'm the owner and winemaker at Marble Ridge Winery in North Andover. I'm joined this evening by my colleague and our head of operations, Ally Prokopio, as well as Frank Taluna from Smallak &amp; Vaughn, to assist with any legal questions. We're honored to present our application for limited site plan review tonight. Marble Ridge Winery is located on my family's historic property, Marble Ridge Farm, which has been continuously owned and operated by my family since its founding in 1680. I grew up on the property in North Andover, and am now the 11th generation owner, following in the footsteps of my father, Brig Senior, who's here with us tonight. Thanks to the support of my parents, I started our boutique farm winery in 2020 during the pandemic with a mission to produce sustainable world-class wines, preserve the rich history of Marble Ridge Farm, and create unique and meaningful experiences for our community. Our farm supports the town's master plan by contributing to all of its major elements of community building, from historic land use and open space to new local jobs and increased tax revenue. Aligning our farm business with the town's master plan was intentional, so that we could be a model for farms that are at risk of closing both here in North Andover and across the Commonwealth. After receiving our basic permit from the U.S. Alcohol and Tobacco Tax and Trade Bureau, our farmer winery license, the transportation and delivery permit, and our direct shipping permit from the state's Alcohol Beverages Control Commission, and receiving unanimous approval from the select board for our pouring permit, we're here tonight upon your invitation.
When did you get the state licenses? Years?
Yeah, right around 2020, 2021. I can look those up.
Just general year, about 2021?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, thanks. Our wine production is small batch and handcrafted, onsite, as you can see from the pictures of our winemaking facility. We currently offer five varieties, including Sauvignon Blanc, Chardonnay, Dry Rosé, Sparkling Rosé, and Malbec. Our wines are the core of our farm operation and drive 100% of our offerings. In our historic 1,800 barn, we offer wine tasting experiences and have been voted the best winery of the North Shore two years running. Private wine tastings are an integral part of the sale of our wine. In order to book a private wine tasting event, you must purchase a substantial amount of wine. Each booking requires a minimum wine purchase, and guests receive additional educational materials about the farm and winery, access to the farm and vineyard, and discounted wine bottle sale. This ensures that every guest experiences firsthand our farm and winery, and each booking provides essential wine sales for our farm. The same is also true for our farm winery stays. Farm stays are another integral part of the sale of our wine. We offer three historic farm winery stays in our ice house, bungalow, and studio. In order to stay overnight on the farm, you have to purchase, again, a substantial amount of wine. Each booking requires wine tastings in the tasting room or private wine tastings in their own room, and guests receive educational materials about the farm and winery, access to the farm and vineyard, and discounted wine bottles for sale. This ensures that every overnight guest experiences firsthand our farm and winery, and each booking provides essential wine sales for our farm. On the left are pictures from a North Andover Merchants Association member networking event, which I'm a board member of, and on the right are pictures of our farmhouse farm stay. As noted earlier, 100% of our offerings require substantial wine sales, and we are compliant with agritourism pursuant to Mass General Laws as outlined in the Commonwealth's memo, which we provided to this board as part of our application. Mass.gov website states that agritourism encompasses farm stay accommodations and lists 15 farms on the Massachusetts Agriculture Tourism Map that offer farm stays. Like ours, the purpose of these farm stays are customarily incidental to their primary use as a farm and their farm product, in our case, wine. We are incredibly proud of our exceptional staff of 25 people, who are all local, passionate, and caring community members. In fact, most of them are local teachers and retirees. To date, we have hosted over 4,500 wine tastings, 50 private wine tasting events, and over 500 overnight farm winery stays. Thanks to our amazing team, we have operated smoothly without incident throughout our entire history. The application we have submitted tonight reflects no changes to our property. The newest building on the property is my home that I built, that was built in 2004. The town's building, health, and fire departments have been to our farm and winery numerous times for both routine inspections and more recently to review and approve our operations for the pouring permit. In addition, our application we have submitted tonight reflects no changes to our operations. Our team operates under what we call a staff code of excellence, and this standard has served us extremely well, as highlighted by our accomplishments. Our primary parking, as Gene indicated, provides 12 parking spaces, which, 12 paved parking spaces, which include handicapped. Secondary parking is eight gravel spaces, and supplemental overflow parking is 15 grass spaces. The supplemental overflow parking has plant screening to minimize disturbances to our neighbors. This includes trees and a six-foot-high vineyard. Additional plant screenings are currently being installed, designed in collaboration with abutting neighbors to enhance their experience and privacy. Our building occupancy is 83 seated and 99 standing. We are not requesting that our outdoor occupancy exceeds these limits. We've applied for an entertainment license to limit our hours of operation to 9:00 PM and noise levels to the residential sound ordinance. These operating levels were established in coordination with our butters to reflect shared priorities around hours and noise. In addition to our butters, we have a local petition that hundreds have signed and commented on to express support for the farm and winery and its ongoing operations. Ally's gonna hand you the latest printout as of about an hour ago, which we have over 400 signatures and about 115 comments, all in support of our farm winery. We have also received significant support at the regional and state level. We have letters of support from the area's top tourism groups. Also, here's a picture from two weeks ago with the director of the state's Office of Travel and Tourism, Kate Fox, who visited our winery with her team for a farm tour and private wine tasting. I'd like to close by saying that my family and I live on the farm, and it's important to us that our farm continues to be a community asset. Our farm and winery have a proven track record of responsible operations, and we're proud of the positive feedback we've received from guests, local businesses, and the vast majority of abutters. That said, we've been operating under extremely limited restrictions for the past two-and-a-half months without the benefit of our approved pouring permit, which has severely impacted our ability to generate revenue during our peak season. We're here tonight to resolve any outstanding questions from this board so that we can return to full operations immediately with our pouring permit in place. I cannot overstate how critical an immediate resolution is to the ongoing viability of our farm and winery. Delays at this point jeopardize not only our current season, but also the long-term sustainability of everything that we've worked so hard to build. We ask this board to please help us get to a resolution tonight. Thank you.
I guess I'll start opening up for questions or comments from the board?
I just have just one quick question. What's your current hours of operation for the winery?
Sure, I'd be happy to answer. So we are open on Fridays from 4:00 to 9:00 PM, Saturdays from 1:00 to 9:00 PM, and Sundays from 1:00 to 6:00 PM.
Peter, any questions or comments? I have questions. I'm just trying to defer if anyone else has questions before you.
I guess my question would be, what's the largest scale event that you would have? I mean, the peak, and how often does that occur?
Sure.
So, sure, yep. We get inquiries every day for private wine tasting events. I think our largest has been 70, and we rarely get those. The size of our room doesn't necessarily accommodate 70 well with tables and chairs. Most of our parties are around 50 or under.
Have you ever gotten a complaint where the police have shown up?
No.
Can I just clarify on hours? I just want to make sure that everyone's on the same page. So they have submitted an entertainment license that includes a question as to what were your, what are your proposed hours? And that did go to 9:00 on Saturday and Sunday, so it's 4:00 to 9:00 Thursday, Friday, Saturdays and holidays, 1:00 to 9:00, and Sundays, 1:00 to 9:00. And that would be for entertainment outside, and inside is 4:00 to 9:00?
It should be the same.
Same, yes.
Yeah. And just to clarify, the board member's question was kind, which is what Ally was applying to, and we have applied for a little bit of an expanded, assuming we're able to get back into operations and-
And nothing is beyond 9:00 PM?
Right.
That's fine. I just want the board just to be aware that that will be permitted through the select board, because I'm sure there's probably gonna be some questions related to those hours, but the select board will take that up as part of the entertainment license subsequent to this meeting.
So here's, do you have some, Kate?
Yeah, but no.
All right, well, I'll go, and then if you have additional ones, please add on. So here's, I thank you for providing these comments and letters of support and things like that. To be honest, to me, it's sort of not really the issue. From everything I've heard, it seems like a great idea. It's a really, I think, unique use of a space, and you're right, it does hit a lot of the criteria in our master plan, and it's a way, I think towns all over the state are struggling with ways to keep farms and historical buildings and family-run businesses in use. So I think, for all those reasons, it's a wonderful idea. The problem I have is I don't see how it fits the zoning, either the currently allowed zoning or the Dover Amendment. So I guess I would ask your counsel to, so, the making of wine, growing of grapes, that's clearly agricultural. That seems pretty obvious that that's an agricultural use. That would fit under the Dover Amendment. We can regulate based on size and scope and things like that. But the use is as a wedding venue, and the use is as for entertainment, where the building inspector says that it's cultural, recreational, entertainment, and those are the criteria we're using for parking. I just, I'm reading through the Dover Amendment, which is Mass General Law 40A, Section 3, and I just don't see how it falls under there. And I guess, from your counsel, I want, like, to hear if there is an argument about why it does. And two, I guess, why didn't this just go for a zoning change, like, two years ago? Like, if this is such a good idea, it just kind of frustrates me that it's, that you're telling us that it's this emergency, which I can understand, but it wouldn't have been if, two years ago, you just went for a zoning change, and we zoned it to allow these things at this location. That seems like the right way to go about it, and my concern is, if we just say, hey, this is a great idea and everybody loves it, so let's approve it, then we set a precedent of not actually following the law and our bylaws. So that's my concern. So I'd love to hear the legal argument as to why this falls under Dover or why it falls under our bylaws.
That's a very, a very good question, to be honest with you. What happens is, 40A, Section 3, is Paragraph 1, is an exemption from-
Can you put the microphone a little closer? Thank you.
The statute provides an exemption for the sale, and they call it the sale facility, for farm products. This is why you can have a farm stand in a residential neighborhood, as long as it's associated with a farm. So what has happened through the years is, the legislature has tried to give farms an economic boost, and one of the ways that they've looked at this economic boost is by agritourism. The memo from the Department of Agriculture has been provided, as well as how this farm complies with a memorandum issued by the, by the Commissioner of Agriculture. So what we look at is, how do we sell this farm product? Now, there's two tests in 40A, Section 3. Obviously, many farms can't function year-round, all right, because of our seasons. So what the legislature looked at and said, fine, if, the first cut of the statute, up until 19, I think, 97 or so, said that a farm stand could operate a sale facility, provided it had 51%, a majority of what it sold was sold through the farm stand. That was changed, and part of the reason why it was changed is, we had our apple growers saying, wait a minute, our season is very, very small. We can't compete with others, or the same thing with the maple sugar growers. They couldn't compete. So they went to the legislature, and 40A, Section 3 was rewritten. And the way that it was rewritten, it said, okay, if you're a farm and you have a farm stand, a sale facility, all right, you can sell other products, provided that during your principal harvest season, 25% of what is sold at that time is your product. Then, then the commodity spoke up and said, well, you know, we can't do that because we have odd seasons. It was tweaked then, and it said, okay, if you can't do the 25% during your principal harvest season, then if you can do 25% annually of your own product, 50% of another farm's, another Massachusetts farm product, this is an economic bill, all right, then you would enjoy the exemptions of 40A, Section 3.
Yep, so I see all that. My real question is that it says, so, require special permit for the use of land for the primary purpose of commercial agriculture. So that tells me the primary purpose is commercial agriculture, but what about accessory uses? Is there any case law or examples of places that, that an accessory use also falls under Dover? That's, I think that's the crux of the question.
Accessory uses are, by your own definition and your bylaws, is something that is going to promote the principal use of the lot?
Yeah. But not every accessory use would then necessarily fall under Dover. That, I mean, to me, that's the crux of the issue, and I don't- I mean, to me, that's the crux of the issue, and I don't have a...
Well, isn't it a little bit where you set the limit on that? I mean, what falls within that scope?
Yep.
I mean...
Yep, so I think, I think, like, tastings of the wine that you're made falls more, definitely closer to a Dover-type accessory use. But then it's guesthouses, and then it's weddings, and then it's, I guess, where are you drawing that line?
For example, sitting there, having some wine and listening to some music.
Yep.
Pretty close. I mean, the question is...
Yeah, for how many people?
Yeah.
Yeah, again, again, it's, part of it is for this, and then part of it also is, again, I have this concern about precedent, because I think you're right, it is, but again, where do we draw the line? And should we be drawing that line, or should you just be zoning it for, if it's going to have a, if it's going to have a cultural recreational entertainment use, which is appropriate on some farms and on some sizes and in some locations, why wouldn't you just zone it for that instead of trying to pigeonhole it under Dover?
It's not exactly pigeonholing. It's a right that the legislature has given the agricultural community.
Where does it say that, though? Where does it say we can do wedding venues?
Well, if you, the agritourism looks at the, includes wedding venues, is actually fifteen, I think, wedding venues in the local area. But this isn't just a farm stay. In order to stay at the farm, all right, you need to buy the wine. So staying at the farm stay facilities is a mechanism, a tool, to sell the wine. You can also have a private tasting at the facility, at the stay. So that's why it's, it's an integral part of the sale of the wine.
How much of the, let's say you were at full capacity. What percentage of the business would be the tourism, the guesthouse, the wedding banquet, all that kind of stuff versus actually selling the wine?
They would have to keep the ratio, all right? It's not a free-for-all, all right? And I'll be honest with you, there's been farms that have not been able to meet the ratio and have stopped their agritourism facility, have stopped their wedding venue, all right? But in this particular case, they're only serving right now their own wine, all right? So one hundred percent of the sale is their product. Now, if they go into the wedding venue and things of that sort, then they have to track what they sell, what is on the center of the plate. And they have to keep to the ratio that the legislature provided. Twenty-five percent annually off their own farm, fifty percent from other Massachusetts farms. That's what the legislature has said, and they would have to abide by that.
Yeah, town council, we have town council, but thank you for being here. Would love to hear any thoughts you have and any advice on how we can grapple with this issue.
Sure. It is a, so Christine O'Connor, Town Council. It is a, very much a fact-driven issue, this accessory use. And in terms of cases that we can look to and other examples that we can look to, it isn't necessarily that the accessory use mirrors the primary use. And so one example of what I'm talking about is a case, Hume Lake. It involved a Christian group, and they had a camp. And we're probably all familiar with a lot of these religiously affiliated camps. And in that case, the question was, is this purely, seemingly purely camping kind of activity, did it fall under Dover as an accessory use? And the court found that it did, and it found that it did because the whole point of it was really to advance, promote, support the primary goal, which was the Christian church that it was affiliated with. And so examples that were given were things like the types of speakers that they had coming to the camp, the types of camp programs that they had. And so listening to all of the facts in that kind of a case, they were able to, the court was able to make a determination that, yes, that was an accessory use that did indeed advance, support, work with the primary use, which was the Christian camp. And so it would be that type of fact-finding in a case like this that you would engage in as to the accessory use. I will say that aside from the agritourism, there are other communities as well. Littleton, for example, is one, where in order to help sustain what has been a significant, you know, farming history in that community as well, like North Andover, there are certain readily accessible accessory uses to the farming. And so I say that only because, again, it's yet another example of having accessory uses to the primary use of a farm, all of which are intended to support that primary use. So I just wanted to mention that in the event that that's helpful as you're, you know, gathering the facts.
So I wanted, the Hume, I think that's a, the Hume Lake case, I'm reading it now. I think that's a very helpful analogy. So I want to read through that. I think that is probably a very useful case. It's just, the second thing you mentioned, I think that would be great. I actually think it would be, it would be great to have this presented a year ago and maybe make zoning changes so we could have accessory uses for agriculture, and it's not just limited to this particular place, because maybe there are other farms and they want to do the same thing. And that's just kind of what the, that's somewhat what frustrates me, is that we could have done this before.
So... I'm not challenging the good idea. It's just, this question keeps coming up. Are you able to share why you didn't seek zoning a couple of years ago? Was there some reason that...
Because the agritourism provision of 48, Section 3 allowed it the operation of the vineyard and the accessory uses to the vineyard. There was no reason to come for a zoning change.
And I'd like to clarify, so we've been working on this since 2020 to ensure that everything that we do complies with Chapter forty...
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, Section 3. So everything from the private wine tasting events to the farm stays, all the ratios are met. And we've made sure that we've been in compliance. And, you know, our attorney Frank, he advises this across the state. And, you know, we didn't feel like we needed to come to this board because we had the state protection. And now, because of the pouring permit and the process there, that's why, that's why we're here, is because it was requested that we come. We never thought that we had to come to planning board because we've been operating as a farm protect and under the state. I mean, you can see, like, the list right, that right up there, I mean, everything that we do involves and requires a wine purchase and participation at the winery. The educational materials, the everything, that was all designed based off of the state.
Right. No, I get, I mean, yes, I can see that it was designed to try to fit under that, whether...
Well, and one, I'm sorry, one more thing, Chair, is the guidance from the state says that agritourism is extending the same rights and privileges as agriculture, as 48, Section 3. So as long as we met the ratios, then our agritourism piece, which by the way, keeps all these farms alive, including ours, that's how we do it.
Good, understood. Okay. So let's talk about, does anyone have any other questions about that?
No.
Okay. Could we talk about the park?
It's okay.
Okay. Can we talk, can you, can you go over the parking again? Because I had some concerns about how the parking was laid out. And then, Jean, where, and can we, where are we, are we at the stormwater? Do we have any...
There's no change to the site. There's no new structures at all.
Okay, so, okay.
Chair, while we're talking about parking,
Yep.
that, it's a little confusing because, Jean, in the staff report, which, thank you very much, it was fine that it was long. It was very helpful. It sounds like standing room can be a lot more people than sitting in the existing tasting room. And that sounds like a lot of cars who would have to bring two hundred people there or whatever it is. So how does that, that does sound like a change from what it's been, but maybe I'm wrong.
We haven't had, I'm sorry, you keep going, yeah.
So just when you, as you address the chair's parking question, if you could think about that point of confusion.
So if I could clarify, because I used a number like two hundred and fifty. That's what would fit standing, but the occupancy permit would restrict it to ninety-nine at the most. And the reason is anything over that would require fire sprinkler system in the barn. And so the eighty-three seated would be attached to the certificate of occupancy and a max of ninety-nine standing in that barn. So although physically two hundred and fifty people could probably stand in the barn, that's not what they'd be allowed.
Correct. We do not want that. Chair, I would be happy to address your parking. So as you can see on this map, I know it's a little bit rudimentary with the limited time. We didn't, we didn't have the chance to do a survey, but the darker gray areas are existing paved. There is existing gravel at the bottom where it says the eight spaces. And then the fifteen spaces to the left are a field that is either open or shared with grapevines. And we have a large open space out there for supplemental parking. And so we focus on filling the spaces of the existing paved and then the existing gravel, and then any sort of supplemental parking that we need, which by the way, is limited days and limited hours, and people are not staying extended periods of time, would be in the grass field, which is a cleared, safe, completely open area.
I'll add that the initial parking plan submitted, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it had seventy-nine spaces identified on the plan. That was scaled back because both for conservation reasons, to get them out of the buffer zones. It was being shown parking on the adjacent lot, which has been scaled back to stay within this lot. And the fire department has brought a truck up and driven their truck through to make sure they're satisfied that they can navigate the site. And they asked for four spaces to be removed as well. So it has been vetted with the town departments, and no one's expressed concern with what's been delineated.
And related to the parking questions, did you say that you have seasonal limits to your operation?
I mean, we adjust our hours depending on the time of year. So, you know, in the winter time, we're very limited operations because, you know, the winter time, people are not typically coming to the winery. But we do not have, we don't have any set structure. It's just when we see business slowing.
So theoretically, you operate year-round?
Yes, yes, correct.
And you have methods of accommodating these parking plans in the winter with snow?
We have for many years now, yeah.
And lighting?
Yeah, we have lighting all across the property. I actually brought, at the suggestion of Jean, to share with you. We have dozens of these lights everywhere. We have supplemental lighting as well. But these provide sufficient lighting for all of our guests. Every driveway, every walkway is lit with downlighting with these.
But that's not affecting the neighbors?
Nobody has made any negative comment about our lighting to date, so. And one more thing about Jean's comment about us relocating the parking. We also relocated the parking upon a comment from an abutter at our select board. So we were at select board in June. Concerns were expressed about some of our parking impacting wetlands, so we relocated the parking there.
Okay. Why don't we see if there's any public comment? Does anyone want to make any public comment? I'm not seeing anyone with a hand raised. Okay, wonderful. Jean, we did receive some comments, is that correct?
Yes, so in the meeting packet, I identified resident comment versus a butter comment. And so today, we received three resident comments, so not necessarily within three hundred feet of the property, all supportive. Most recently, one came very late today, five o'clock, and I've added that to the packet. That's fifty-five Marble Ridge Road, which is two, there's one house between the winery and that site. And she had no concerns and was very positive about what is being presented. And so those were three resident comments. And then we had a director butter comment from two forty Grape Pond Road that had a series of questions. I don't know if you prepared answers to these questions.
I have not seen the two forty... Oh, is it two forty or two seventy?
I'm sorry, two seventy.
We are, we are, we are prepared to address them, yes.
Okay, so, Aton, I don't know if you want to go through those one at a time, but it was too...
So we have it for the record, and we appreciate someone sending in those comments. I think I'd rather summarize, because it's lengthy. Just trying to find the comments. Jean, you emailed those to us?
They're in the packet under our butter comment.
Yeah.
They were in originally when the agenda got posted, so I didn't email them today. I can display them if you'd like.
There is the comment from...
It's Nancy Leland at two seventy Grape Pond Road.
Butter comments, Leland, okay, got it. Okay, so we have a comment from Ms. Leland. There's a question of ownership. To be honest, that's not really our issue. The building inspector has, the ownership goes to the issue, so the ownership goes to the issue of the lot size. It has to be a certain size and a percentage being used for sales. But the building commissioner has determined that that portion qualifies under Dover. So I don't really think that that's something for the planning board to really get into. Can you talk about the schedule of activities as well as the off-street parking?
Sure. So these are related to the temporary certificate of use and occupancy. And I spoke with the building commissioner about this of Butter's comments, and he did not have any concerns. He felt like it was compliant with the temporary CVO as well as, you know, what he expected. So I'd be happy to go into more detail if you'd like, Chair, and address them one by one.
The events?
Sure. So these are public wine tastings that involve a tour or some type of experience. They're part of our normal operations. We always do it during the fall. It's during hours of operations, and it's limited in number of occupancy to what the temporary CVO has provided us, which is, by the way, only ten cars or twenty people and extremely restrictive right now. That being said, the reason why they're listed on events is more of a software issue. Our platform puts it in under events versus just normal kind of like offerings. So it's listed under events on the site, but it's, it's a wine tasting that you're signing up for. The off-street parking, we've submitted at least four plans to the town based on their feedback, all of which have been approved. And so the latest parking plan is what we have been abiding by. That's different than the parking plan up here. The latest parking plan that's under the TCFO is slightly different than what's here. And we have been following that as required and requested. And I think that was the, that was the... And I, I think that was the, that was the, the end of the temporary certificate of use and occupancy. And I, again, I'd be happy to answer any questions or comments.
I think that's fine. Parking, agriculture, zoning, so there's a, there's a comment about compliance with one ninety-five, but you're not going based with our zoning article as to agricultural use that, that Jean talked about earlier, but you're not proceeding under that provision, so that's not applicable, um, because you're going under the Dover. Okay, all right.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, please.
But I know we're in the comment period, but I, it, it has to do with the rental units.
Go for it, I need to know. I don't think there are any other more comments.
Oh, that's true, we're not, but we're dealing with the written comments.
Ask Kay, go ahead.
Um, and I, I, I'm reading the memo that we got regarding Dover and the discussion of rental units in there. And you mentioned the ADU bylaw that we just adopted, but I, I'm not seeing an equivalent to it.
It's not equivalent, it's.
Okay, I don't even know why.
The wine stay is a whole, whole different animal. The wine stay is specifically to market the product.
It doesn't apply with the ADU bylaw, that, that they can't be converted to ADUs, they don't.
Yeah, I'm, I'm aware of that, I just, I didn't even see the relevance of it being in this discussed here. But, in terms of a, a temporary rentals, um, that, that is here, would, would that sort of Airbnb situation be allowed in an R, I believe this is R two?
It's R one. I know the application, some materials say R two because they took it off of the town's property card in the assessors office, not the zoning map. And so, it is R one. Their, their position on the guest houses is that they can be short-term rentals because they are not ADUs. They are in fact accessory uses supporting the winery. And, so the question came up, they are advertised on Airbnb. And so, we wouldn't expect that independent of the winery, that Brig is going to take up customers that just want to stay and have nothing to do with the winery. What he's attested to is, if they stay in a guest house, they have to buy wine, they have to have a tasting, they have to support the winery.
That's what we said earlier, right, is that you have to buy the package and the wine. Okay, so, would that, could that be a condition of the, um, permit?
Sure.
Okay, all right.
And I just want, on, while we're on that subject, Council, I'm, I'm wondering, I mean, it does feel a little close to the camp situation, the religious camp having this sort of activity. Or, does that, do you kind of see the same connection from a legal standpoint there?
I do. I, I think, and I think it's, the reason I had mentioned even another community, and you can see examples, uh, in other places as well. In addition to, uh, being analogous to the Hume Lake case, it also, I think, is in keeping with other examples that you see, where this is kind of in the universe of activity that farms now, um, offer in order to survive, yeah.
So, the, the case, can I just read some of the first? So, what I, and I would ask actually, if your attorney could give us something briefly as to why the different accessory uses, and please be specific for each one, falls under this case. And the case is Hume Lake versus Planning Board of Monterey. But it says, in addition to religious purposes, and, and what I would say is just think about when it says religious purposes here, like, switch that in your mind to agricultural purposes, encompasses more than just typical religious uses, such as worship or religious instruction, so would include more than just agricultural uses. The exemption covers any use, the primary or dominant purpose of which is to aid a system of faith and worship, so I think we can say to aid, um, agricultural. Notably, in determining whether a particular use of land or structure serves a religious, in this case agricultural purpose, we avoid making judgments as to whether proposed use constitutes a necessary element. It has to be that a propose, does not require that proposed use be intrinsically religious. Rather, the exemption also encompasses a variety of accessory uses that while not inherently religious in nature, are components of a broader religious product that facilitate the functioning of that project. So, I think frankly, Council, this is your best argument. And I think it actually is likely to encompass all of these things, but I'd like to see in writing how each of these things fits into a use that is sustaining, accompanying, and, um.
So, you want an additional memorandum?
Just short about how, just specifically how these accessory uses fit under this, um, Hume case. Because I think that's, I think really that's the crux of the issue, and I thank our town council for providing this case, because I think it's a great comparison example. I mean, to be honest, it seems like the way this was structured is to fit under forty A. And I'm, to be honest, I'm not sure if tourism or the farm is really the primary use, but it seems to be close enough that if we can, um, that if it can fit under this case law, then I think you've survived.
So, I have two questions now.
Go.
They're multiplying. First, on the short-term rental. So, just as a practical matter, let's say it's graduation season. Local college, local prep school, someone is desperate for short-term rental, and you have a space and you get this phone call. How, how do you handle the person who's desperate to find a place for a local graduation and you have a place?
Uh, I mean, we don't treat them any differently than anybody else. They still are required to do all aspects of this in order to continue to meet all of our ratios and requirements under forty A section three.
Okay, thank you.
I actually asked a similar question to my client, and Ally answered. I decline people every day if they, if they're not.
Yeah, and if they're not the right fit, then.
Right.
But you, you also understand that you could, if you have another question, please.
I do.
That you could ask for a zoning change, and we could think about a zoning change overall as a board for agricult, for uses that are accessory to agriculture that could even be, you just have an Airbnb, or you can have up to X amount of guest house per acre or whatever. I mean, it's, it seems like a natural fit, um, to sustaining agriculture that just wouldn't necessarily be specific to this project, but you could broaden it with a zoning change.
So, if I'm following the discussion, it sounds like with town council's, uh, assistance, there may be a path.
Correct.
If there is a path, if that's the case, if I heard correctly, your temporary permit has you at twenty? So, I'm trying to understand what the timelines are for relief, if such a path exists. What are the timelines?
The, the twenty, what is the twenty referred to?
The number of occupants we can have.
Under our current temporary, uh, COO.
So, you said it's a extreme restriction?
Sure.
It, it is, we.
Okay, so, I just wanted to make sure I heard that correctly.
Yeah, so, the timeline, well, if, if we grant the permit under the limited site plan review, and part of that establishes parking and, um, hours and all of that, and, and they're asking for up to a certain amount of people, which the actual, the normal, uh, certificate of occupancy is allowed. And once they have that permit, they could go back, as I understand it, they could go back to the select board and get a, get full permitting for pouring and stuff like that, which would allow for additional, right?
So, the, the numbers that have been set were just because we wanted this to, to survive until we could work through the permitting process, certainly. And so, if the board tonight had a high degree of confidence that Frank will be able to write a legal opinion and, and do what you requested, then, and if everybody has a sense that you, you think there's a path forward, then I could draft a decision for the next meeting, uh, which is October seventh. If this board, I will say internally, there was no opposition to increasing the occupancy today. Like, they felt very comfortable that they can go to max occupancy, given fire safety has all been accounted for, the parking, the building commissioner agreeing with their position and how many people they would like to occupy the barn. That being said, I wasn't comfortable doing that ahead of this board. You had an application before you that had restrictions, and I didn't feel it was my position to say, yeah, I agree with everyone else, we should just let them go to their max occupancy.
But that's not our, that's not, we don't set those numbers.
Well, if the permit is right now is temporary and it's restricted based on certain parameters.
Right, but we didn't set those.
No, you did not.
We didn't set those restrictions, so whoever set those restrictions could change them.
But, but are you saying we could do something on a contingency basis that would accelerate that action?
If the board as a whole felt comfortable to authorize me to go higher, as long as, everybody else would still have to sign off on it, the fire department, Brig would have to submit another request for a temporary CO. And we would then, if, again, if this board felt comfortable going to sixty, you know, maybe fifty, something halfway in between, then we would just reduce that restriction in their favor.
So, that's why I was asking about timelines. If in fact the path is likely and reasonable and we've sorted it through appropriately, then if there is a way to offer some relief in the meantime, uh, I'm no farmer, but, um, I kind of think maybe grapes are coming into, you know, harvesty time.
What are, what, what events are being proposed in the next three weeks?
So, i- i- if, if you don't, uh, if you don't mind, um, just to, to clarify, one, one thing, I'd just like to clarify this to the board. We are presenting and discussing Dover and assuming we have Dover protections. You're the only board that we have to get, or the only board that is under consideration right now. We don't have to, my understanding is we wouldn't have to go back to select board because we have that approval. We would have to go back for the entertainment license, but we already have the hours and everything else already established with everybody else, um, so.
To piggyback on that, so, the town was reluctant to issue the pours license until they're compliant with zoning, which would be that October sixth meeting. And so, it would be a way to get least occupancy up, but still, at this point, be a taster's, tasting amount operation.
And, and if I could ask one more thing, I know that the schedule is a little bit unique, um, this month with the, with your, your meeting dates. You know, time is of the essence for us in every way, and if there's any way that we can get to a decision, even, uh, the thirtieth, I, I, I think Jean said, you know, might be a possibility, only if the chair and the board would be open to it.
So, because there's five Tuesdays in, what month are we in, September? You actually have a two-week break before the October seventh meeting. And so, if you wanted to call a special meeting to address this towards the end of September, that, that would be your, your decision.
Yeah, I actually just have a comment. So, I guess, so, so, having difficulty connecting the dots between case law to have a use for like weddings and receptions, like, that's like, that, that, that seems like a pretty, to me, it seems a little bit of a gap, right, because you imagine a wedding being like, you bring in vendors, most weddings won't be like.
So, this case, again, so that's why I think it would be helpful, I mean, I live ahead of it in front of me, to have council kind of, kind of brief it, but like this case says, a parking lot can be a accessory structure or something like that that qualifies under Dover if it's supporting the primary purpose. So, I think, I, I think, I think that's the question, is, is, is it involved in supporting the primary purpose and is it intertwined with it, right? So, yeah, to John, John's point earlier, there are certain things that are pretty obvious, right? Like wine tastings, that's pretty obvious, that it's kind of intertwined. And then, the guest houses, I'd say that's a medium, but I think they.
Yeah.
I think they kind of close that loophole with, with the requirements. So, I think that, that was some good legal advice there. And then, the weddings, that's closer, but it's so supportive of the business that I think it, it's close, but that, that's, that's the issue we have to decide. But there would be certain, you know, if it was a bowling alley, I would say that that is too far, right? I just, where's the too far?
For me, when council made the comment about how this ties in with the agritourism and every single thing that's done at the winery has to comply with the law, that's kind of a self-policing thing, because if you stray too far, then you're not going to hit those thresholds or percentages.
It is, but at some point you go too far, right?
Right, well, that's, yeah, bowling alley is a good example.
Bowling alley, if it's a car repair shop and you give everyone a bottle of wine when they come in with their radiator.
Probably not a good idea.
It's, it's, you're, then you're skirting the law too far, right? So, it's, it's, it's where it is. I, I think wedding stuff probably falls. It's, it's hard for me to decide on the moment without kind of thinking about it.
Yeah, I think it just would be helpful for me in the, the next memorandum to like actually reinforce that case. So, I'm personally having a difficult time connecting those dots.
The, if, if I may through the chair, all right, you have to, you have to take a look at the situation as a sale facility. Now, the legislature said you can have a sale facility. Is that a, is that a place where you will serve your product? All right, whether it's a farm stand or a wedding venue. If it's the wedding venue, it's tricky. I'm not saying it's easy, because you have to take your twenty-five percent annually. Then you have to go out and source fifty percent. This was, this was an economic bill that was submitted, and part of it was to economically keep farms viable. So, not only do you have to satisfy your twenty-five percent, the fifty percent of the product has to come from other Massachusetts farms. That's the whole key. It's not like we can, you know, bring in any type of caterer and they buy their product down at, um, Restaurant Depot and, and cook it up. It, it can't be that. It has to be another Massachusetts product.
If, if we clear the, if we say it's okay in the next three weeks, what would you host?
Yeah, so let me, let me clarify.
Because I think the, the weddings, bookings, birthdays, events is the closest thing. Everything else seems pretty good, so I think we'd be more comfortable with everything else for the next two or three weeks. So, that's what I'm wondering, what you have possibly planned?
Sure. Um, can I make a general C M N first? And this is especially, um, important to the abutters that I've spoken with and really care about maintaining, you know, really great relationships with. We are a boutique farm. We're five acres. We have limited parking. We have limited occupancy. I live on site. Um, I just started my family. Like, there's, we are not planning anything big on the property from a public-facing perspective. This is boutique. And so, I know that this isn't, um, uh, how do I, how do I phrase this? Uh, you know, we're talking about, you know, what we can do and what we can't do, and I'm talking about what we're intending to do. And then, in terms of the types of events, I mean, Ally and I have talked about how important it is that we really focus on the wine tasting experience, and we will be doing private wine tasting events, but they're going to be very limited in size. Where, I mean, as, as, uh, the chairwoman pointed out, I'm sorry, uh, the, the member woman pointed out, you know, we have, we, we don't have that much parking. It's, everything's intentional. We want it to fit in the neighborhood. I don't know how many, um, how many ways I can express this anymore other than, uh, we really do care about making sure that it's the right business for the size and scale of the property. And so, when you say weddings, I say, we're not hosting big weddings. We're not hosting, uh, ma- maybe a micro wedding, possibly, but Ally and I haven't even talked about that. I don't even think we want to do that. We want to be small, quaint, and assets of the community where people like yourselves can bring your families and, and visit us and buy wine, of course.
Just to piggyback off of that, in terms of, you know, an eighty-three-person wedding seated, right, with our occupancy may seem like a semi-large wedding. When we talk about that, we talk about, then if we have eighty-three people seated in that event space, we have no dance floor, we have no space for a cocktail hour. We have very limited options for a guest that would want to have a wedding in that space. So, micro weddings is the only thing that we would be able to do there, and it's not really on our radar right now. And then, just to answer your question about what we're doing in the next three weeks, we get inquiries every day for. we get inquiries every day for private wine tasting events in our venue space, and we have not been able to book any of them per our temporary certificate of occupancy. So in the next three weeks, we will not be hosting anything besides the events that we had pre-booked prior to this happening to us in July.
What are those?
Uh, we have a rehearsal dinner, we have, uh, actually a welcome party and a rehearsal dinner, and I believe those are the only two in the next month that are allowed under our temporary certificate. We've been banned from booking any other private wine tasting events moving forward, like indefinitely, meaning that I can't book things for 2026, even though I get inquiries for them every day.
So are we comfortable giving some relief on those type of things?
Yeah.
As Jean has described.
So are you comfortable going to full occupancy, which would be eighty-three people seated?
I mean, I personally am, but I can't speak for everyone else.
Okay. Sense of the board? Everyone okay?
Paul, Peter, you are?
Yes.
John?
Yeah.
John?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, are you comfortable letting them begin their booking operations again?
I am.
Okay.
I am as to, so I, I, I still, I think I'll get there on, so I'm just looking at like the, the building commissioner's letter. And he says there are proposed accessory uses of the winery, bridal showers, wedding showers, rehearsal dinners, overnight guest house rentals. I'm, he doesn't mention the tastings. I'm sold on tastings. I think wedding showers, rehearsal dinners, bridal showers, I think I'll get there, but I'd like to see something in writing to convince me. And the guest houses, I think I'm there as long as there are conditions. But I don't, I'm not sure that I'm comfortable greenlighting it without the actual conditions being put into a permit.
I thought what you were suggesting is allow bookings at that level, but this is still, would be still under the temporary certificate.
It will.
So we are not greenlighting beyond a temporary certificate. So my understanding, what that means is, if on reflection and further study, what we thought the path was here tonight, turns out that there is a problem. We've not given the go-ahead. We've simply expanded the size of the temporary permit. It's still temporary.
Does it cover the guest houses?
So the temporary permit allows tastings up to twenty people. We're now agreed we're going to allow it up to max occupancy.
Fine.
I think the only other one for accessory that you said you were comfortable with is the guest houses. So I can condition the temporary permit to allow for rental of the guest houses.
As long as they abide by these criteria that have been laid out.
Yes.
And Jean, how long is a temporary permit for?
Thirty days.
Starting when, or starting reissued, need to apply for new ones?
Does, he's applied for one yesterday, well, I think the eleventh, but so far, everybody signed off on it except for DPW Engineering. And so first thing tomorrow morning, I can change the conditions on this potentially, or Brig will have to put in another application, and we'll recondition it.
And that the parking is as laid out in the, in the submitted plan?
Yeah.
Okay. May I ask for two?
Hold on. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were gonna say.
Well, either way, no, I have two, I have, um, the bylaws make it clear that the building commissioner has to decide whether it's Dover amendment or not.
He put it to us, so I think we have to decide.
But, but we would probably make our recommendation to him.
Yeah.
Yes, so I'll get his approval. I'll cover what you guys just agreed with and.
Make sure.
He, right, he's ready to, to go forward. I mean, everybody is, to be honest, so.
The other concern I have, and I know you're talking about putting a condition in with regard to the short-term rentals about, and I've been staring at this language, I think it's on your website. I don't, I have concern, there are definitely certain religions and practices and people who don't purchase alcohol or drink alcohol. And there's also very, very prescriptive conditions with regard to public accommodations and that kind of thing. And I, I just, I just want us to be thoughtful about conditioning, especially if we're putting into a permit, a condition that someone, I mean, which, which this says, this, you know, they have to purchase alcohol to stay at the farm. I'm just putting that out there.
Yeah, it's an interesting point.
And I don't, you may have already thought of that, I, because this language.
Well, we don't make anyone drink it, that's for sure.
Well, no, and that's, that's probably a good thing.
Although I think it does sort of increase the nexus that the purpose of staying at the house is to drink, right? Which is the primary purpose anyway, so I think it fits the overall mission.
It's an interesting point, I gotta think about that one. Okay, so.
And just to clarify what you were saying, you're saying that the condition does not need to be, or may not need to be included, because it would discriminate and force people to drink or buy wine.
Well, right.
But at the same time, we, we have to do it for our purposes.
Correct.
To meet all the requirements.
It's an interesting, that's an interesting question of what would trump, but.
Let's just be thoughtful about it.
Yeah.
Because the last thing we want to do, or you wanted to do, is deny access to somebody who.
Yeah, there might, there might need to be a asterisk somewhere down there about religious exemptions or something like that.
And I just had two quick, in terms of the decisions and kind of what's before you all, we talked about the guest houses, we talked about the wine tastings. We, I, I'm not sure where we landed with the private wine tasting events. And if we're going to be allowed, as Ally pointed out, we're not able to book out any future events now or, or going forward at this time until somebody lets us.
Private wine tasting events.
Events, correct.
I think we're, uh, as long as it meets the, all the parking and everything else, I think we have said that that.
Great. I don't, I don't think we specified private versus non-private wine tastings. We just said you could do wine tastings.
Well, okay. And then in terms of the pouring permit, which I understand that there are other people involved here, but it would be very helpful to know if you folks have any concern with holding back our ability to use the approved and has been issued, but literally an escrow pouring permit. We've spent thousands of dollars preparing the space, going through all the, all the legal to get this, training our staff. And knowing that you all would, how you feel might be helpful for us to work on the other folks to get this issued, because again, you saw the numbers are, um, we're going right into our, our peak season, October, and if.
So we don't really get a say on pouring permits. But I would say that the presentation, as you pointed out, meets planning elements of the master plan and that the plan that's been presented, we've analyzed the parking as well as the layout, and those all are, seem sufficient, and so we're comfortable with allowing you to move forward with your plans. But I don't think we can really take a position on a pouring permit, one or the other, but.
But you won't, you won't hold it up, up so long as other parties agree?
I don't think we, even if we want to do, I don't think we could, so it's not up to us.
My understanding, hesitation has been not until a full CO has been issued. And the full CO would, wouldn't be issued until you get through this permitting process. However, if they reconsider it, all that you're trying to say is this, it's not the board, the board's purview to hold that up or not hold that up, and so.
So it would be up to? The building commissioner for, okay. Thank you all.
Okay.
May I let it clarify?
Sure.
Next meeting, is it going to be October thirtieth?
No, October seventh?
Or October's, I'm sorry, September thirtieth or October seventh?
We're not going to schedule a interim meeting where we've given pretty much the go-ahead for everything. So October seventh will be the next meeting.
So your legal opinion will be really helpful to me to get it as soon as possible, because that's how I can craft a draft decision once I get that.
I'll, I'll, I'll have it due next week.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, great. Continued until October seventh. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Nice to meet you all.
Thank you. Okay, uh, hold on, I gotta close all these tabs.
Good night, thank you.
Okay. Stone Cleve Road Map, one oh four, lots one thirty-nine, one forty-one, forty-one. Application for Planned Residential Development Special Permit under Article eight. Supplemental Regulations Part Five, Planned Residential Development and Article ten Administration one ninety-five, ten point seven of the North Andover zoning bylaw. The applicant proposes construction of a private roadway and three single-family dwelling units serviced by wells and septic systems. Property is located in the R one residential zoning district. Hi again.
My name is Ben, I'm a good range engineering group.
How are you, Ben? All right, what can you, uh, Jean, why don't you tell us what's going on here, and then we'll go to Ben.
All right, so the project consists of three undeveloped parcels of land totaling approximately thirteen point three one acres located on Stone Cleve Road. The locus is across from Barco Lane with Duncan Drive to the rear of the site. The application has been filed with natural heritage as the land is identified as priority habitats of rare species and estimated habitats of rare wildlife. Comments from National Heritage Endangered Species Program have not been received yet. So in May of this year, the applicant presented a preliminary subdivision plan that yielded three buildable lots and a preliminary Planned Residential Development Plan to the board. The application for the Planned Residential Special Permit is filed as a site plan as opposed to a definitive subdivision plan. Site plans are required to meet the requirements of site plan review. The proposed private roadway is twenty feet wide. If a special permit is granted, the board may impose a condition that the roadway comply with the requirements of subdivision rules and regs. However, they may choose to waive these requirements as well down to a twenty-foot-wide, essentially private driveway. Dimensional regulations for our PRD site plan are as follows. There's no minimum lot size required, lot frontage is not required, all yard setbacks are not required. Height limitations are thirty feet or two point five stories. The distance between the structures is fifty feet and a fifty-foot buffer zone from the parcel boundary to any structure located within the PRD. The buffer is to remain open without pavement or roadways and left in its natural condition. Usable open space is defined as part of the land within the PRD, which is reserved for permanent open space or passable recreational use. The usable open space shall be open and unobstructed to the sky. For site planned PRDs, the minimum usable open space requirement shall be fifty percent of the total parcel area, and no more than twenty-five percent of that total amount required shall be wetland as defined by local bylaw in the state act. The proposed plan meets these requirements. Although parking spaces for the usable open space is not mandated, the bylaw specifies that the plan of board may require parking space to facilitate use of the open space. The bylaw also states that usable open space shall be, to the greatest extent practical, practicable, accessible to the general public unless restricted, and not be exclusive use of a homeowner, homeowners association, or a nonprofit organization. The open space will, is required to have a perpetual restriction or a conservation restriction on it. And then all PRDs shall be owned in common by and readily accessible to the owners of the units in the PRD as well as nonprofit group, a private group. The town of North Andover can hold the CR. One note I have that I'm hoping Ben will speak to, there's an existing thirty-foot right-of-way easement located within the required fifty-foot buffer and the usable open space. My understanding is that the easement is used to access a horse farm located off Duncan Drive. Care review for stormwater has begun, but we have not received the first letter yet from Horsley Wood.
And I don't, Jean, I don't recall doing a plan, a PRD in the last.
Were you here when Wellington Way was permitted? It was six oh one Boxford Street is what it started as and became Wellington Woods as a subdivision. The street is Wellington Way. So after this, Street, Stone Cleve is Duncan, and then Brookview, which is also a PRD, and then Wellington Way, which is a PRD.
I don't remember that one, but I don't know if you or John could kind of just, it's, it's a little different than our normal, um, than our normal special permit, because it's under a site plan. Just what the kind of the history of the PRD and what, what I guess makes it special or what the purpose is?
Yeah, I mean, I, the PRD bylaw probably goes back, I'm gonna say at least twenty-five years, but the basic concept is under conventional subdivision, you put, if it's a one-acre zone, one house in every acre with the required frontage, doesn't matter what the topography is. You basically build out the entire property and you leave a nominal amount of open space. So the concept of a PRD was to determine the number of units which could legitimately build under conventional zoning and then put, basically, put them on, in normal cases, on a smaller lot and preserve a lot of open space. You have shorter roadways, you preserve the topography better, and you have open space. So that's the basic concept. There are two flavors of the PRD. One is, it's basically a subdivision, but just on smaller lots with a lot of open space. This one is a little bit different because it's more almost a condo ownership of it, so that each of the houses does not have its own lot. It's the common lot excluding the open space. Generally, most of them, I think, I think every single, Jean, I think every single one we've ever done in North Andover has been conventional, so this is a little bit different.
This is the first I've seen a site plan.
We've, we've not done one like this before. But I, I think in general, it's fair to say it's worked out very well. I mean, there's quite a few subdivisions, particularly on steep, uh, steep topography and so forth, where we've managed to preserve the natural features, shorten the roadways, and provide a lot of open space. So the concept is there. The nexus of it, in my mind, turns on a couple of things. One is, are we absolutely sure that by right, they're allowed to build that number of lots? That's the, the, the first issue. And then the second issue is really all the specifics of how and where the lots are built and can you access them? Especially in this case, I think a little bit more so, because it's, it's a little bit different. We don't have regular lots, so we have to be careful that what we end up with reasonably makes sense.
And so, and Ben, some things I'd like to be addressed is, so one, how this open, what, what is this open space? Is it wetlands? Is it woods? Is it fields? Like, what is it? How would the public have access to it and what could they do there? And how does that affect any neighbors' butters? So those are some of just the thing, oh, and also the comments from the fire department about, Jean, if, I, I definitely want to make sure we address the fire hydrant sprinkler.
And the water line.
Water connection issue as well.
Ethan, if I can just add one more thing to the background. So again, the board may recall that this, this was a trefon. It was under agricultural use for decades. The town was given the first right of refusal, because they were obviously taking it out of sixty-one A in order to sell it to these proponents, the developers. And so the town refused its right of first refusal. And it was, the justification was kind of, it's a parcel that is not contiguous to other open space. Like, if, if people were to get there, they can't, without crossing over Duncan and getting into Brookview and then crossing over to Wayland, it wasn't contiguous with other open space parcels. And it's not in the watershed and for other reasons that the town did not opt to exercise its right.
So we have public open space that's not super attractive, this public open space?
But it's protected land that can't be further developed, and there's environmental benefits to that. There's all kinds of wildlife out here. There would be wetland crossings if they did a subdivision. That'd be.
Fair enough, but that, but that, the part of the bylaw says, to the extent practicable, we should make it so that it's accessible for people to use. I'm just trying to get a sense of whether that's actually a legitimate thing that people would be able to use, because that, if it's something that people can use and walk around and have a nice day, then yeah, maybe we want some parking spaces. If it's not, if it's shrubland or brushland or stuff that's not connected and people aren't actually going to use it, then why have parking spaces? If it's just a natural habitat, great, leave it as a natural habitat and have it be conservation, that's fine. I'm just trying to get a sense of what it is, so that we can determine how best to set up the plan, so.
And, and on that same subject, the endangered or rare species, whatever that issue is.
Okay.
In that space, too. Because we don't have any information on that.
I'll start with that. It's the blending turtle. The blending turtle, spotted turtle, they are so endangered, I find them on every one of my projects. It's one of those things, they're, they're everywhere, but they're endangered. This particular property is kind of at the edge of that zone. This particular property is kind of at the edge of that zone. It is across the street around, you'd call it Wellington Way.
Yep.
That's where the, the river or the large brook that the turtles would spend the winter in. They, they hibernate in, you know, the waterways that are semi-open, you know, they're deep where they can get into the mud and hibernate. In the spring, they come out, they find places to lay their eggs, and they wander around. You can see there's kind of a connection. Gene's bringing the map up right now.
Do we, after this, do we have like a Google Earth kind of image that we can maybe get to?
We can. So, you can see across, so, so these highlights are the priority habitat for endangered species and estimated habitat. So, they, they're hatched with both yellow and brown lines. This is Duncan Drive and you can see this tail of the habitat protection. It actually crosses Boxford Street to the other side and so, my understanding is what they're going to look for is that that connection is not broken through this development, that they'd still be able to cross and get to this area. And that was the case in Wellington Way as well.
Right. So, that's what they're concerned about, but if you were to go to the left of the map, the habitat ends at our frontage on Stone Cleve Road. So, you know, I don't know if it's really, really good turtle habitat. They just say the turtles wander around in the woods during the summertime. So, we're going through that process with natural heritage. We had preliminary meeting with them. We filed and they told me this week they'll schedule a meeting in the next few weeks. But the, yeah, that's the aerial view and you can see the property is forested. There's some little kind of openings up there. They've grown in that when this Google photo was taken, they had recently cut some trees up at the top of the screen. That's kind of the top of the hill where our houses are going.
The, the horse farm is back here.
Horse farm is back there. The horse farm does use the property. I can see, you go up there, you can see horse droppings up on, there are some trails. When they did the tree cutting, they created trails. So, there is some use of that property. They're kind of open. They don't go anywhere though. They kind of go up the hill in the end and, you know, different spots. But I think the property owner, when he was clearing the trees, he used the driveway to get in to take out the trees because there's no evidence that he ever went out on the front. There is a, down at the front of Duncan Drive, you can see kind of where there's no green. That's a vernal pool, kind of right, right in there. And that's, that's the wetlands that's on our property and extends up kind of to the, to the left there, right. So, those are the wetlands we delineated. And there's another small wetlands right out in front. If you want to bring the existing conditions, I sent you that colored copy.
Yep.
So, we just kind of highlighted, just to, because I knew you'd ask where the wetlands are, the blue shaded areas, we've shaded, um, they don't copy real well on the copier, but I scanned them. There is kind of an isolated area out in front of Stone Cleve and an area in the back. And if you look at this topography, you can see, you know, those round areas, for example, the bottom right of the parcel, that's a little top of a hill. The topography's coming up. It's very kind of steep in there and that's the top of a hill. There's a couple other little spots where there's a top of a hill right in there and, you know, just down to the right of that, a little lower. But, you know, the wetlands...
Fair to say, there's not a lot of wetlands.
Not a lot of wetlands.
I mean, it doesn't look like there's a lot.
Nope. Not a lot of wetlands, so. And then the other feature that there is a driveway and it's kind of shaded and brown, you know, yeah, right in there. The easement is shown, the driveway kind of goes out of the easement a little bit, not that anybody, that doesn't make any real difference to anybody, but it's just, it's a gravel drive that crosses the property and goes out to the horse farm. It's to the left. So, you know...
So, the horse farm is up here?
Right in there, right, right. So, if you want to bring up the proposed, I guess the next page on that, page two, is basically, this is the proposed plan. As Gene said, there's a twenty-foot-wide paved road to a ninety-five-foot diameter cul-de-sac. You know, one thing that the subdivision lots require fifty-foot rightaways, you know, certain dimensions, twenty-five thousand square feet or, I think it might even be a little bit less than that, but you start to enlarge things and you use up land. So, we chose to do this type of a subdivision or PRD to use up as little land as possible with roadways. We have a twenty-foot-wide roadway which meets the fire department access requirements for the length of the road. It has a turnaround for the fire trucks. It's only about a three and a half, four percent grade, although there's a lot of topography. It goes up and down very steeply in some areas, nothing more than really twenty-five percent, but just kind of little knolls and knobs and depressions and we kind of just fill, you know, kind of evened it out going up there. So, it's just a gentle driveway. Presently, the stormwater at the bottom of the sheet, that flows out into Stone Cleve Road, there's catch basins along there. On the top half of the sheet, from about where the cul-de-sac is, across in a straight line, that all sheet flows and flows into that wetland in the back. So, we've divided our stormwater up so we have some smaller ponds. There's one right in that area there, right at the beginning of the road, right there where she's pointing, and then out in the back.
Oh, right there, is, is that a detention pond?
That's a detention pond, yeah, yeah. So, these detention ponds, we've done test pits to determine where the water is, water table is, what the soils are. We had it tested. All the sieve analysis are in the drainage report. They're all sandy loam. They perk really well. We've done perk tests for the septic systems.
So, has, has the board health approved the perk tests?
They witnessed the perk tests. We have not submitted our septic system plans yet, but they are all designed. These are the actual locations where they would go. It, obviously, Horsley Whitney is reviewing the detention ponds. These ponds are infiltration ponds, so they accept water. They will fill up, you know, a foot or a few feet during a storm and then they infiltrate out through the ground. There are overflow structures. The pond down by the street will overflow into the street drainage system. The pond kind of halfway up the hill on the right of the road, that overflows into Pond One. And the back pond has an overflow and it goes out across the driveway into the wetlands. We had, we've done all the calculations and I was really careful. We reduced the amount of runoff going into the Stone Cleve Road drainage system. There's a subcatchment that kind of goes to the left, goes on to the neighbor's property. We have reduced that, you know, significantly by just taking area that is flowing off to his property now with grading, we're deflecting the water away, so it goes into that pond on the front left of the property and then into the drain system. Same with the, with the homes to the right of the property there. There really isn't, you know, a lot coming off of our property onto those properties there. You can, you know, there's a little hill right behind that first lot and, you know, from there, everything flows back. So, not a lot of water flowing onto those properties. You know, this, this layout does afford a fifty-foot buffer zone between all the neighbor's homes, so, you know, we are keeping the fifty-foot buffer zone. There's a very large amount of open space. I think it's seventy percent of the parcel and then only twenty... eleven point nine, twelve percent of the open space parcel is wetland area. So, it is open, it's forested. Now, is there access? We did show where we could put a trail up into the back and we can connect to the existing trails that are there. There may be an opportunity to go out to Duncan Drive and connect it together. I, I honestly, I have not, if you kind of scroll down, Gene, to see the top of the page? Yeah. So, it goes out, there's Duncan Drive. The, the problem we have is there's a little wetland there. So, um, you know, we can't really connect without crossing that little wetland with a trail. Now, I don't know what that wetland looks like. I can go look at it and see if it's something you could walk across, but, you know, that, there's, there's a possibility there we can look into. We don't have the right to use the driveway out onto Duncan Drive. It's, it's specific in the, in that easement document that this property cannot use that driveway out across the neighbor's property. You know, we can use the land that's under their driveway. We can convey water over it, it's part of our ownership, but we can't use it to access these lots.
So, how would that work in the CR, in the conservation restriction?
So, it's there and there, there's wording in the bylaw that says you can have conservation area on each side of a roadway.
Yep.
So, that's what I would say is that meets that requirement. There's a roadway there. It's an easement, it's a little gravel driveway, but we...
It's supposed to be contiguous, but a roadway can separate the open space.
Right, right. But we technically, we own the property, so it is technically contiguous, they just have an easement over it. We can use it to walk. The people who live here or people, you know, a trail, we just can't use it as a driveway access to our properties. That's what we can't do.
Gene, so, the bylaw allows, obviously, for space to be used for trails and public use as well, but does it also contemplate just having conservation restricted areas for, you know, animals as a public purpose?
It, it doesn't mandate that you have to allow public access. It doesn't mandate you have to provide parking, so.
Yeah, and my recollection, Gene, is most of the PRDs where the open space is fragmented and not contiguous to anything else, it's, it's all private. There may be one or two of them where I think we've tried to allow public access, but for the most part...
Yeah, a lot of them are owned by the homeowners association, but again, they can't restrict public from accessing it, but if there's no trails to access and there's no parking, it just doesn't get used.
Right, that, but that, but it seems, it doesn't seem, my reading of this, we can't restrict public access to it. It has to be, the bylaw says it has to be available. The question is, how appealing do you make it or is it...
So, Duncan Drive has supposedly access off the cul-de-sac, but it's so wet, I mean, I've always heard, like, they can't go in it anyways because they'd have to swim their first ten feet to, to get to the open space and there's no parking there anyways, but, but it's not forbidden, so.
And who would hold title to the open space, the...
It would be part of the homeowners association unless it was given to some other organization that might want it.
There's four things listed on my staff report that it could go to. It could go to a nonprofit, the town could hold it, a homeowners association or a nonprofit, like, so.
And if we, we couldn't post no trespassing signs because there would be public access. So, I'm just thinking who's responsible for making sure activity's appropriate and that there's not a...
You can't, you can't, you can't fence, you can't fence it off, you can't, you know, put no trespassing signs. It has to be open to the public, it's just a matter of how useful is it and how, how much do we want to encourage?
Typically, there's a condition, the deed references, that their owner, so there's a deed reference to the open space and, and that they're all aware that they're responsible for it, so.
Okay. Okay.
So, as far as the water and, the water system is concerned, we proposed a well on each lot. The wells all meet the offset requirements to the septic systems. Fire department commented that they'd like to see a hydrant nearby. If we can't provide a hydrant, then we provide sprinkler systems in the houses. Gene checked with the public works department to actually find out where the nearest waterline is, and there is a waterline on the horse farm that goes out to Lost Pond Road that was put in by Dave Kindred a long time ago. I checked today, that easement actually runs against our property on the back, that piece that runs out to Duncan Drive, so...
So, this is the subject lot right here, this large one?
Yep. And, yeah, it's hard to see on this plan, but you can see the, the waterline, the blue line that's running off Duncan, kind of to the top left, right. That actually is on an easement that's on a strip of land the horse farm owns and that's where it gets its frontage. And that easement rests up against our property line, so, you know, the town has that easement, they can allow us to tie in right there and extend it onto our property. We still wouldn't, you know, wouldn't affect any wetlands. I don't even think we'd affect any buffer zone. So, there is an opportunity that we need to look at to bring the water up over the hill and put a hydrant down on Stone Cleve Road, so. I found out about that today, so...
Yes, and, and Tim was supportive and said the town would provide an easement to them to, to do that, so.
So, what, what question I have, because this is the first of the site plan PRDs, you use the term lots, but there aren't lots. So, how do you differentiate between which property belongs to which person and who has to maintain it?
So, with the condominium, we do condominium plans all the time that have exclusive use areas. So, you draw a, a plan and that's, you use this area and you can put a fence around it and it's all delineated in the condominium documents, what they can do with it.
Okay, great. Is there any, anyone else have anything at the moment before we go to public comment? Okay.
I, I just, just the observation, I was not here, because I was on vacation when you did the preliminary, but the, the logic of how you ended up with three is you grabbed two from the formas and one from the...
We developed a roadway. We had a roadway plan. It was, looked pretty much like that. Do you have it?
I'm bringing it up.
Yeah.
Give me one second.
Were they, were they two-acre lots or one-acre lot?
Two-acre.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, so, he reconfigured them all, John, so that, that's the existing condition, the two one acres shown there, and then reconfigured them.
So, you did, you reconfigured it and you've got three two-acre lots?
Right.
With the, with the fifty-foot right-of-way. And would it be significantly more permitting to construct?
Well, yeah, the whole idea, what we're talking about here is the advantage of PRD and puts the houses where they should be.
Right. Take a look at the cul-de-sac that you have there. I mean, that's a, that's a big expanse of pavement compared to what we've shown on...
Yeah, okay, fair enough.
So...
Okay. I'll take any public questions or comments. If you have it, just come on up to the microphone.
I have quite a list, so, good evening, planning board, chair. Should I just run down them or...
Well, first, you need to tell us who you are.
Andrea Lee, eleven Stone Cleve Road, I am in a butter. Um, all right, a couple of questions we have in terms of the development. One is, will there be blasting of any rock, ledge, or drilling in order to create the wells? And has that been looked at? Any studies around that? Any concerns regarding the water bed as it is, the flow to our homes that also are all on wells as well? A five thousand square foot home is a lot larger than the neighboring and budding homes.
Okay.
Has that been taken into consideration?
So, generally, contractors don't blast, they hammer the rock now. You know, we, we did test pits out here and it looks rough, but we were down ten, eleven feet on every test pit we dug. Your water lines are typically five feet down, so there may be some areas where we hit a boulder or a knob of ledge, but they hammer them out, so there generally isn't any blasting anymore. If we go the well route, they're just a drill rig that drills down into the, you know, into the bedrock to get the water.
Is there any concern or are studies done regarding the well draw of those five thousand square foot homes and whether or not we would run risk of our current wells running dry at some point? How do we assess that? I just don't know.
So, generally, you take a subdivision like Stone Cleve Road, they all have wells. There's an acre of land. Title five allows you to have a septic system and a well on one acre of land. And that's generally considered, you know, there's enough capacity there. We have three wells on thirteen acres of land with three septic systems. You know, we would consider that that is much less dense than what exists all around it, so the capa... You know, we would consider that that is much less dense than what exists all around it, so the capacity would be fine. You know, generally the bedrock wells, when you're down in the bedrock, you really don't get wells drying up unless it's really, really dry. You know, typically these wells are 200, 300, 400 feet deep, I've actually drilled one 800 feet deep not far from here, but once you get that deep, there's plenty of water.
Excuse me, I have to go down my list here.
No, take your time.
Let's see here.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that, just real quick? When you were talking about a line by the horse farm that can be used for a hydrant, that's not potable water that could potentially go to these houses?
No, it is, it's town-owned water. As part of the Lost Pond subdivision, they looped the water from, I believe, Forest, Foster Street. And they looped the water through Lost Pond Road, through the farm, out to Duncan Drive. And I don't know, I think it just stops there at Duncan Drive, but it's for future connection. So we would kind of extend that same water main, you know, up through our property out to Stone Cleve to give a hydrant out on Stone Cleve.
Gene, so one of the things in the fire department letter says, is recommend the fire department that you have the water main be extended to cover the Stone Cleve and Barco Road area, or these houses be required to have residential sprinklers? So to Kate's point, would that provide water just for for fire purposes, or would that actually provide, you know, usable water for, for the residences?
That's the fire department's motivation, is to get a hydrant there.
No, I understand that.
But if you look at Tim Willett's comment, so we support the town water line easement for this proposed water main, which would also provide future water main extension potential along Stone Cleve. So that would be a town capital project that potentially could provide it to other residents on Stone Cleve.
So how do we move that, how does that get moved forward, is that part of this, or is that just something that has to be done in addition?
It wouldn't be part of this to extend it down Stone Cleve. This would just satisfy the fire department and that it gets a hydrant proximate to Stone Cleve. And it would be on the developer to bring that line to the property.
But could we require that? Or is that possible, like, is that-
We're gonna look into just including that in the plan. I've already talked to the developer about it.
Yeah, it seems like a great idea.
Yeah, I mean, that's an attractive amenity.
Right, right. Plus I told him, yeah, how much is a well, you can give it a three wells to do a water line, you know, there may be a little bit more, but-
Typically you can't require off-site improvements, but-
No, I understand, but if they could bring it to- If they could bring it to their property and then we have the option later on of bringing it to the rest and getting it off of, giving the option of having town water versus well.
You might remember, you recently did that with the Ray Street property, they had a pump station that potentially could satisfy the line that never got put in for North Cross and South Cross. And the town has gone forward and hooked those people up to that same pump station.
Okay.
For the sewer.
I, can I piggyback off of your discussion for a second? I will say, I think the closest fire hydrant we've been informed, I believe towards the beginning of Stone Cleve is off Sherwood, I don't know if that is accurate.
Sherwood.
Sherwood, okay. And if the committee could take under consideration that possibility they were just talking about regarding bringing the water, I believe we're the only, I think us and Duncan are possibly the only two streets out in that neck of the woods that do not have public water at this time. Okay, my other is obviously the elf in the room, which you've all been discussing, which is the open space. The exterior parking lots for folks that, you know, to come and utilize the open space. As a resident, I get a little passionate about this, I love where I live, I love the open space, I love seeing the animals roam. We do get a lot of hunters in our neck of the woods, I do have a lot of fear of, you know, what will happen in those open woods if they are provided access, you know, ease of access, I'll say. Obviously, open space is open space and we want to have that, right, we want to see things flourish. I do struggle with the external parking spots at the end of that driveway, inviting people, right, to come and hang out in the woods. You know, take advantage of it, if there's not really trails, there's not really a pertinent reason to be in those woods. I think there's a lot of concerns around the folks that actually have a budding land, what that means for us, right? Am I gonna end up with a lawsuit because someone was in there and fell down rock ledge, or whatever it might be, right? I think we just, you know, myself very concerned with having open space that has ease, right, when we have a lot of abutters in that area. So, you know, looking for the board to take under consideration removal of those parking spaces. And considering that really, the value of having that land there and just letting it, letting it be.
So, but you understand that we can't restrict the use of it?
Understood, but your discussion earlier was around making it easy for people to access, and I think that's where my point is, is it would be preferred that people don't have ease to access. Obviously, if you want to come on the street and walk through it, go for it, right? That's, that's there. I think it was mentioned to me that this was done very similar to Wellington Way and Brookview. This kind of layout. They have open space, they do not have parking spaces. So. Let's see. I think we've gone through almost all of my items. That is it, thank you, I appreciate your time.
Okay, great, thank you. So, before we take any more comments, does anyone have any interest in having the parking spaces there?
No.
Anyone? No, no? Okay, so we have no interest in parking spaces, do you have any interest in parking spaces?
No.
Okay, great. No parking spaces, that was easy enough. I mean, it's funny, because going into this, before this, I'd say, oh yeah, parking spaces, let people come, park, use it. We have a lot of trails that it's good for, if this isn't good for it, then we use it for another purpose. So this seems like this is better for a different purpose, so let's use it for the purpose that it would best suit. Okay, great.
Hi, I'm John Holleran, 434 Boxford Street, I'm a butter as well. Just to piggyback off of one of Andrew's questions, we do get hunters out there. Because this is now gonna be an HOA, can the HOA post no hunting?
No. They can't post no trespass, can they post no hunting? I don't, I would say-
Anybody, if they own the land, can post their land. So it can be posted. But honestly, if you're hunting out here, you're not within the law, because you have to be 400 feet from a house to share-
They are hunting out there.
Then call the police.
They park at the power lines and walk through.
Yeah, we're tied, well, boat, I assume we're talking with gun hunting versus bow hunting, those are different. Okay, yeah.
Gene had a comment.
Yeah, got you.
So the conservation department is the one that issues hunting licenses every year, so I'll, I'll alert them that this activity and I'll let you know whether it's allowed or not allowed.
Thanks.
Thank you.
But either way, it's not something that we can regulate. Okay, anyone else, sir? Sure, please.
Which, which, your father is who?
I'm the guy that did your septic system.
You're Ben?
I'm Ben Junior.
Did you do my septic system?
I did. Still working?
Yeah.
That's your question. That was one.
My gracious, hello, hello to you ladies and the board. I'm Dick Adams of the north side of the border. Now, everybody's talking about the water table. I've lived there for almost 40, 50 years. At springtime, I call it high tide. Because when that Stone Cleve was originally put in, it wasn't put in properly and the drainage wasn't right. I should have brought some pictures with me, because the front yard of mine looked like a river, an ocean. The water was coming in my cellar windows, that's how much water came in on me. Now, Ben, you're saying you're gonna distribute this water to the stone drains?
Right. In, just in the front area.
They won't work. They haven't worked since we've been there.
Are we doing a review of that?
Yes.
Yep.
So I could, so we're, I mean, I don't discount your experience, that's probably 10 times better than what we're gonna do?
I deal with it every year, springtime, high tide, I call it.
So what we have to determine is whether or not this will change that in the negative, right? This may not make it better, but the question is, will it make it worse?
I find it's gonna make it worse, you've got a big tunnel, big funnel, I'm sorry, a funnel coming to me.
So right now, I assume that there are no stormwater systems in place?
They're there, but they accept water.
Okay, so-
The water goes down the street, it's not going in the storm drains.
Yeah.
There's a catch basin drainage system.
Yeah.
The road was built in 1978. Stormwater wasn't adopted until 1993. It was very rudimentary.
Is it a private way?
No.
No?
It's a public way, but-
So, the water issue may be something we need to talk to DPW about, but the question here is, is this going to change that? And so we're going to have an expert that we hire evaluate their system and give us feedback on that, which is the best we can do.
What the board should do is come out there in the spring. The water actually, Ben, goes over Stone Cleve at the low side. And it's entered the house on the north, south side.
Yeah.
That's like
Yep, it is-
10 feet maybe higher than what it is now. I've got pictures if you'd like to see-
No, I believe you, I believe you.
I've got pictures of it so-called dry season now, where it's right into the houses, right now. And they claim there's a, what is there, a beaver dam down there? Ben?
Oh, I don't know, down in the brook, there probably is.
Okay. Nope, thank you, I, again, that might be something we raised with DPW, but sort of independent of-
What was the reason to change the bylaws from Salem and Banham Drive? All the way out was two acre parcels. What was that instituted for?
For the-
It's like 35 years old. It was-
What was the reason of putting that in, of changing the bylaws?
The logic of it was that you want to have less density the farther out you are from where services are.
I'm sorry?
The logic was that you wanted to have the least density the farther out you were from where people lived. I mean, take for example here, if in the future everything was on a one acre lot, you would have the problems with wells and so forth, whereas if it's on two acre lots, it's less. The whole idea was have more density closer to downtown and less density further out, it's easier to service.
Okay, I understand that, but what are we doing here? You've got 13 and a half acres and you're squeezing everything right to my shoulders. Water's gonna run from that retention pond, it's gonna come right into my house.
So what-
I guarantee you that in the, in the high tide. In the spring.
He's the butter to the left. Right to the left of the subdivision.
I'm on the whole left side of that.
Yep.
And Ben, you did my Title V.
Right.
Do you remember how much land you took?
Oh, I know, it's a mounted system.
And you're expecting me to believe that you're gonna put three septic systems, Title V, in that area?
Yep, they're, they're raised up, they're mounted systems, but we've done all the testing, obviously the border health looks at it, the stormwater, Horsey, Witten will look at it. And I tried to be very conservative, I tried to make it so we improve the condition, meaning we we send less water, especially to his way and into Stone Cleve. And I think we will improve the situation, I'm not gonna say that it's gonna be perfection on his property, but it will improve it.
So this-
The storm drains-
This lot is his lot?
The storm drains in front of my house do not work, they don't accept water, it goes down the street from Barco Lane, right down to the so-called Brook. It's mosquito lake now.
So, so I can ask the towns engineering department to look at that specific catch basin?
Yeah, there are no curvings, there's catch basins. You know, there's probably not maintained, you don't know if the water's still going in them, there could, there could be, definitely could be problems with the the catch basins accepting water in a street that old.
Okay, well, what we'll do is we'll review your, what your plan is and have our peer reviewer review it and see if it passes muster.
It was back to 1978 when it was put in.
Right, but I can't change that.
Then we had the storm of 78, which is a big snowstorm, and that spring was wet, and I was underwater.
Yep. Okay, well, thank you sir, we appreciate the comments.
Thank you so much, your time.
Okay. Any other public comments, sir?
You've got glasses now, right? Right, we all do, don't we?
Jeff Fave, 141 Stone Cleve Road.
All right, I need you to come up to the microphone.
Thank you. Thank you. Jeff Fave, 141 Stone Cleve Road.
Great, thank you.
I am, he owns two lots, but I'm next to him, to the left. I also have the similar issues that he has with the water coming down the road, I appreciate him coming up and explaining it better than I would have. But as it comes down the road, it goes to the right of the storm drains, doesn't go in the storm drains, and it goes down my driveway and into my garage. So, I'm concerned that if water comes through that basin and goes on to the main road, as Mr. Adams said, it's gonna come down the road and cause more problems with water in terms of dealing with it. I know you said you're gonna deal with engineering and have them take a look. I would appreciate that. The other thing I just want to clarify is that we're not doing the parking spots, I know you said you weren't interested, but I just want to justify, because I have, if you come out there on this little trail that you diagrammed here and you go on to that road, that horse farm road, it crosses my property in order to get to the horse farm. I have a 30-foot easement, I do not want people trespassing on my property.
So, I can't control that, but-
No, I know, I know.
So we have said that we do not want the parking spaces on the plan, they-
Thank you.
And they don't want it, so, again, there may be future projects under the PRD where we do want it, I think it's a, I think when we have open space, having parking spaces and encouraging people to use it is a good thing. It just doesn't suit this particular project for, so for this particular project, we're, we are gonna say that we do not want and there will not be parking spaces.
Thank you.
Alright, you're welcome.
Can I just, if we approve a plan with, based on our professionals' recommendations that has a certain drainage pattern and accounts for water and where it's gonna go, what's the follow-up to that? And it sounds like there's already a bad water situation out there, so I don't know how you measure whether or not it gets worse as a result of this, but what would be, what would happen?
So generally, there's not, generally, it's, would be somebody coming to us with a, with an issue and bringing it up and then seeing if we, if a change in conditions or something like that, which would require reopening the permit. There was a, there was a permit we did not too long ago where we required them to do like testing after a storm and come back like after like three storms or something like that. But I, but it was a different type of permit, and that was the first time we've ever done that. I don't think it would, especially here where there's already an issue, like you said, I don't know how you would measure the delta. I think that would be tremendously difficult.
I mean, some of the problem is that the, and you alluded to this, the development practice is during the 70s and 80s, given the high, or mark when there was single-family development town, probably don't meet the standards of what they are today, and there's probably some places where remedial action should be put in place, but I honestly, in all my years in the planning world, can only think of a very small handful of projects where the development itself created a weird problem, there were a few, and they tended to be more on steep slopes and topography where you had weeping in the hills. And the problems were fixed eventually. But, you know, the point is real, I mean, and in fact, in a lot of cases, there's existing problems out there. And we want to ensure it doesn't get any worse, but it's sometimes hard to figure out what's causing the problem, which is, you know.
What year did you start on the planning world?
I forget, that was so long ago, that was so long ago, yeah.
Pre-recorded history?
Yeah, something like that, yeah, yeah.
Been here ever since I've been coming here.
Okay.
I started here in the 80s.
Then, Gene, after this, if you could just tell us kind of what's next, what are we waiting on? That would be helpful.
Brett Fulton, 162 Stone Cleve Road, just like to understand why if the zoning is what it is, you have to put three houses in, why can't you just put in one?
They can, well, it's up to the developer how many to put in.
Okay, so why can't- Okay, so why can't we just put in one? Could I ask that, may I ask the developer?
Well, I mean, they can, they can put as many as fits under the zoning. Why, honestly, it's not really, it's not really relevant, because they propose...
You're looking for exceptions?
No, but they're allowed to put, there, this fits the number of acres, so they're allowed to do it, so we, this is a site plan review, so we can't say, no, you can't do it, it's just where things are set out, so I can understand, I mean, you do it.
But I think the answer to the question might be that this parcel of property allows the developer to put in three houses.
Okay.
That's why.
Okay.
Right.
And for the developer, in order to make money, they put in usually the most that they're allowed to do. That, that's why. It's not because we're telling them we want three there, but also, we can't tell them not to do it because they're allowed to do that. What, what can change is the geometry of the houses, and do you put them all in one spa, spot to preserve the open space? And we generally like that, and so generally, we would say, yeah.
So, you, most likely, if you were to go typical subdivision, which is a different route that you could take, you could probably get more houses and less open space. They might be smaller, but you could probably do more, but you would have to jump through more kind of legal hoops. This allows it develop, this particular bylaw allows them to have less hoops, but requires more open space. So, it's, it's, this particular bylaw is kind of a trade-off. It says you can kind of build more than you would, you can, you can, can't build as much, but you have, you don't have to go through as much headaches, but you can't build as much and you have to preserve more open space.
But it requires your approval for...
It requires our approval as a site plan versus a special permit, which has more requirements.
But I think, put it another way, it could be worse.
Yes, it, it's correct.
Well, I, I would suggest it would be very hard with that lot and the way it's...
Yeah, it could be, it could be. It would just be less open space.
Well, the opens, they still couldn't, well, you know better. Thank you.
Very good, okay.
Indri Lee Levin, Stone Cleave Road. Sorry, just going back to the water for a second. I share Mr. Adams' sentiment. We are the first house on the corner. We do have similar issues in the springtime. If you actually look at the, the way the road is formed, there is almost like a upward hump and then down towards his house. I'm asking only because you have the additional stormwater ponds there on the other side of the driveway in terms of where those will be emptying to. The front yard of my property is essentially a muddy mess. My driveway is eroding constantly, so as you take a look at that, my ask would be to just, you know, revisit how those are draining out.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, I'd like to follow up on the earlier question. We've got a lot of input about existing concerns with water, perhaps because in the seventies, the procedures were not as good, but forewarned it's bad. The abutters are saying they don't want it to get worse. What would the recourse be if this project goes ahead with stormwater, that we have a third-party review, but it turns out that it was wrong? And the abutters' water is worse? And a competent engineer can trace it to this development? What is the recourse?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't know the answer to that.
Well, I assume we'll all be back here, but you sound like you've got many, many years here and you're not gonna let that happen.
Right, we, it's, it's very difficult to go into a neighborhood and quantify exactly what's happening. And we're here, it's August, we're in a drought. You know, if it was March, and we're not gonna wait till March, but you may be able to see more things happening right in real time.
But you've also got thirty years' worth of homeowner experience, which is not nothing.
Right, exactly. So, the best we can do is try to reduce the amount of stormwater going in their direction. All the comments are, it's going down the road and it's not going into the structures. We have a direct tie-in right into a pipe, so we're putting a manhole over a pipe, so our water is gonna go into the pipe. Now, we're gonna put less water in that pipe than if it theoretically went in, you know, came over land and then into a catch basin. We're reducing the amount of water. So, and we do that by infiltrating into the ground, holding it back and infiltrating it. So, theoretically, that should lessen the amount of water going downstream and therefore maybe help their situation somewhat.
Peter, so I would say is, if we put in a condition that it, that cannot make the water situation worse, and if they were then violating that condition, then they'd be in violation of the...
That's the standard.
Right.
Isn't it? That's the default of the reviews.
They, they have to comply with mass stormwater regs, which says they can't make the situation worse, and so that's what's being, and our local bylaw.
Right, so then you'd either have to, then you'd either come back to review the site plan, or you'd have a mast EP issue.
So, that's very helpful. In effect, it is a condition of the project. You can't make it worse based on mass state law, and if it does make it worse, then the conditions have been violated and we'll be back.
But it, right, but it has to be worse, and again, it's very difficult to quantify...
Sure, sure.
Causation as well as...
I, I would say before that happens, it would probably be a land dispute between the two people being affected and...
Right, we had that, we had that at Burger King and Bertucci's.
Oh, yeah.
Right, and we were saying, they made it worse, no, they made it worse, and we're like, all we did was issue a permit and you guys have to figure that out. Okay. But it will be, it would be a condition.
It's helpful, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, all right, Jean, what's next?
So, stormwater is the big piece.
Yeah.
We haven't even got the first review letter back yet. Obviously, this water line that's come into play at Duncan Drive, and just see if we can tie that in to help improve both fire conditions as well as future benefit to other residents.
Yeah.
Any interest in a site walk? I mean, I, I think probably not, but I just thought I would raise it.
Not for me, but, but anyone's welcome to talk to them, to the developer and see about going out there. I don't have...
Yeah, and may, maybe the best thing to do is, can you stake like where the driveway is, or, I mean, the driveway, yeah, that we can just go out there on our own, that might be the best thing to do.
What's a good timeline then, or should we continue for the next meeting, or should we go out?
I don't think it would be resolved by the sixth, but I think there should be an update by the sixth.
Yes.
Okay.
I would hope that we get the stormwater, we can get the stormwater this week, I can make changes next week, and she may be able to have it re-reviewed for the sixth.
Seven.
Seven, yeah.
Okay, so we'll continue till October seventh.
So, the applicant also has to file, well, they have filed an NOI right then, you've submitted it?
Yep.
With the Conservation Commission, so they, they are before them as well for these words.
Okay, so we're gonna continue this hearing until October seventh. We will, whether we might decide on the case will depend on what information we get in the interim. If you do not see, so on the Thursday beforehand, you can check with Jean or you can check the agenda that's posted. If there's not a draft decision posted, then we're not gonna make a decision for that week. You're still welcome, all welcome to come, provide any input, but that's a way to know if we're gonna make a decision, potentially make a decision that week, or if it'll get, continue for further, okay? So, I'm, I think it's unlikely we make a decision for October seventh, but you'd have to either check with Jean or check the agenda on the Thursday before to see if there's a, potentially for a decision in there, okay? All right, so we're continued until October seventh. Also, if you have any additional comments, anyone wants to submit by email, you can do that as well. Okay, oh, do you have something else?
I just have one question.
Yeah?
And my concerns with the well water.
Who are you?
Oh, I'm sorry, Larry Flynn, I'm on Barco Lane.
Okay.
And the, the concern again with, with the well draw, I did hear that it's usually not a problem, but is there some testing or something that can be done to confirm that this doesn't restrict?
I don't recall ever having a testing. I mean, to be honest, they can drill wells. I don't know that there's any regulations about how many, maybe if they just wanted to drill wells right now, I think they could. But I, I, we'll look into it, but I'm not aware of any water test, I mean, it sounds like there's plenty of water. I'm not aware of any kind of testing that, but we can look into it and see, we can ask and see, I don't know.
Kind of interesting, I'll have to admit, that I cannot think of a large subdivision that ever was in a well since I've been on here, so it's never even come up.
Yeah, I mean, with three houses, I, like, like, like Mr. Osgood said, I don't really have concerns. If it was twenty, then maybe it'd be like, hmm, but we can ask the engineering to see if there's anything that can be done to test it. I'm not aware of anything, though.
Some reassurance would be appreciated.
Yeah, and, yeah, I get that.
And one other, just quick question. What, what's the logic behind, why, why is this an HOA arrangement versus individual property owners?
Ben, any?
So, it's a cluster development. The advantage with the HOA is the town isn't strapped with the maintenance of the roadways, so I, I think the town is all for when the homeowners can maintain the roadway and the stormwater system, doesn't cost them any money, you know, Public Works likes that. They don't have to plow the road, trash pickup is at the end of the driveway, so on, so we just, the other reason if, if it becomes a town roadway, then it gets a lot bigger, and we're trying to just reduce the impact of the, the roadways and so, house lots and so on.
Okay, great, we're continued until October seventh. Thank you, everyone, for attending.